My name is Abu Edwards. I am the, I have the honor to be in the co-founder of Millennials in Action Political Action Committee, which was founded in Alani, in the Logan area. And our focus have been organizing millennial, Black millennials in a political process and helping them to be civically engaged in their communities. I am also the, I wear a few hats. I'm also the founder and president and CEO of MIA Strategies LLC, which is a community engagement firm. And I'm also a former committee person of the 42nd Ward. I've been a committee person on and off since I was 18 years old. I am 32 years old. I've lived in the Alani community for mostly all my life. I've kind of gotten a temperature of, you know, the political structure, the businesses in our community, how things, you know, run a little bit. But today, we're here for a good cause. I'm partnering with an organization called Committee of Seventy. And before I actually tell you who they are, I'm going to introduce Pat Christmas, who serves as the Director of Policy. So before we begin, I'm going to let him get a chance to introduce himself.
Good evening, everybody. Is my audio coming through? It might have a little bit of internet issue. Hey, everybody. Pat Christmas here, a staffer at the Committee of Seventy. Thank you so much for coming out. Looking forward to a really interesting discussion.
Thank you. So today, we're here to talk about councilmatic redistricting. And I'm going to wait for Pat to pull up our PowerPoint and our presentation. But it is very crucial and important for us to kind of have this conversation. Right now, we have an opportunity. We are currently represented in the Alani community by two councilmatic districts. Those two councilmatic districts is Councilmatic District Eight and Councilmatic District Nine. So if you look on our map, and if you look at that green part that's coming into the Councilmatic District Nine, this is kind of the meeting for that discussion for that community. And I'm going to tell you in our presentation while we're having this conversation for that part and how that part can impact the entire district. So next slide, please. What is council redistricting? It's kind of very simple, right? Every 10 years, city council has to redraw its maps after United States Census released their data. Districts are supposed to have roughly the same amount of population. From the 2020 census in Philadelphia, just over 1.6 million people populated, I would say, in Philadelphia. And then with that, with that number, roughly 160,000 residents are supposed to be allocated to each councilmatic district. For those who don't know, there are 17 council members in the city of Philadelphia that represents the city of Philadelphia. Seven are considered city councilmen-at-large, which are like more of city representatives. Then you have 10 council people who represent councilmatic districts, where they are, represent a group of people in the boundary. And in Philadelphia, we have something called councilmatic privilege. And in this political, especially in this process where there's kind of no oversight. In the past, normally, council people will kind of, you know, negotiate on what areas that they want to represent. And it's never been more of a community input process on, am I going to shift in a councilmatic district? Why am I shifting in the councilmatic district? Does that have any impact on my district? Where I live? Was that, would that have any impact on the quality of life? Would that have any impact on who will be able to run for political office in my district? So right now, what you're looking at is the current map that we currently have. And now, since the census data have released their data, city council has until February 12th by law to have an ordinance in place for a new map. If they do not have this in place for a new map, not just all 10 councilmatic districts don't get paid, all 17 councilmatic, council members will not be paid. And it's up, it's up to us as a, as community members to enforce that. Next, please. I mean, go back, can you move back a little bit? I'm sorry. So just for clarification, this area right here, that green part, and we're going to talk more about it, that literally is, if you picture, if you live in a community, if you picture from like Second and Fisher all the way down to like Broad and Wyoming, that's that green part. Those are those communities like that, you know, 13th Street, 12th Street, coming back up to, you know, Second and Fisher, those are those communities that have been impacted. And the reason why we had this meeting tonight is because that same community has been impacted 10 years ago. So they were in a different district, you know, 10 years ago. So we want to make sure that, you know, moving forward, that, you know, council people who are representing this district understands that they need to have the community input and how this district should be redrawn, what factors are considered in the district, why those factors are considering the district. And those factors can, you know, come down to hospitals, land usage, businesses, and things of that nature. Next slide, please. Once we said why redistricting matters. In 2001, Philadelphia had the worst councilmatic gerrymander district in the country. Just for example, if you look at Councilmatic District Seven, you see that they come from, they came from, the district spans from Kensington all the way up to northeast Philadelphia in 2021, I mean, 2001. And why is that important? Because when we talk about, you know, in it, when we talk about quality of life issues and we talk about services, it's kind of hard for one councilperson to travel and to, you know, get around that entire gerrymander district. And I think what we were going to see in, 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 in 2000, what we're going to see in the next map is how the district changed in the last 10 years to, to, to help that effort. Many communities are often, well, you know, kept whole, but some are, you know, split. What we're looking at is split communities and split neighborhoods. Next slide, please. So how should the boundaries change this time, Pat?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. So this is the big question. Yeah, that was, that was a kind of perfect overview of the, of the basics there. And, you know, we're not going to get into the, all the nitty-gritty details of the charter and what it says about how this process goes down. But, you know, as Mr. Edwards noted, you know, it is city council that draws their own districts here, and this will go into a bill, just like any other piece of legislation. And so, you know, naturally, unavoidably, there will be negotiations inside city council about how these lines get drawn. So, yeah, I think one thing that we want to make really clear is that, like, you know, this public discussion, this community discussion is really important. And actually going back to 2001 and what the map looked like then, and then 2011, the map that we have right now, the reason it's a better map and just, you know, there's, there's a little bit of an eye test. You can, you can, you can play almost with local districts sometimes, especially if they're kind of, you know, compact and not looking like jigsaw pieces, is that there was, there's a lot of hard work outside of City Hall and especially in the communities that were most cracked in 2001. There was also a lot of hard work inside city council. And that's why the map is in such better shape. Now, I'll also note, before kicking it back, that, you know, the cores of these districts have been the same for a very, very long time, even going back to the 60s and maybe even before that. You know, the, and the 8th and 9th in particular, since, of course, those are the ones we're talking about this evening. Those have been largely the same, with some adjustments, of course, every, every 10 years. But the cores have, have, have been the same for decades. So, you know, I don't think anyone's expecting, you know, a completely different looking map on the other side of this, on the other side of this process. So I'll kick it back to you, because I think we're talking about the population figures.
Yes. So based on the census data and the population in Philadelphia, we've seen in certain councilmatic districts a growth and, and, and certain other, in other councilmatic districts, more of a steady with not a high growth. And right now, there are four councilmatic districts that's going to see some type of shift in population. There are two councilmatic districts that have well over 160,000 residents. That's Councilmatic District One and Five. And then there's two councilmatic districts which need actually additional population, and that's Councilmatic District Four and that's Councilmatic District Eight. And even, even though those four councilmatic districts are going to see a shift in population, that shift in population is going to impact all 10 councilmatic districts. Because then it's like more of like a puzzle, right? If I need 5,000 people, where do I take it from? And what does that mean for those residents that I'm taking from a different councilmatic district? What schools is in that, in those boundaries? What hospitals are in those boundaries? And that's where we kind of get, you know, very political. And the reason why this is important, because like congressional redistricting and like, you know, state house redistricting, there's actually bipartisan committees that actually focus on trying to draw maps, whereas the city councilmatic district is actually drawn by the members with the power coming from the, the council president. And this is very important, because, you know, like we stated before, there's been little input in how these maps are drawn. And if we are talking about what truly impacts communities, especially communities of color, it's about, you know, representation. And if you've been in this community, especially in those particular areas, you've noticed that we've literally, and I have to give my hats off to our former world leader of the 42nd Ward, Elaine Tomlin, who, when I first got into the game, she was pushing for fair maps. She was making sure that, you know, we jumped from three state reps to two state reps to hopefully to, to one state rep. She kind of helped, you know, move this discussion to get us, you know, at least fair representation. And now the fight still has to continue. We still have to pick up to mantle, and we still have to understand that Alani is a community and Alani should be represented, and we shouldn't be chopped up blocks. Whereas, you know, it's very hard for our elected officials who have a, a combined effort in Alani. And I know that you guys may think it's simple, but it's very hard when it comes to land usage and territory. It's very hard to, to kind of get some things done. So I guess, you know, I'll open it up and kind of stop here before we get into our next to kind of open it up and kind of hear some of the, you know, concerns or, you know, how it looks. And I think I want to picture what we're kind of looking at. And if Stephanie from the North Fifth Street Revitalization Project is on the call, I would love for her to comment or anybody else. But particularly on Fifth Street, when we look at between Fifth and Fisher and Fifth and Somerville, on one side of the bridge is when, once you cross one side of the bridge, you're in a certain, you're in a different councilmatic district on the, on the right side, heading towards, on the right-hand side, heading towards Fifth and the Boulevard, where you have Sherelle, the other councilperson on the left-hand side, who has that district that is, you know, towards the Boulevard, but going towards Frankfurt. And living across the street from two different councilpeople and trying to get folks, you know, rallied up and trying to, you know, we're talking about RCOs and we're talking about businesses. Those are two councilmatic districts operating differently politically. And we have to make sure that our voices are literally at the forefront. So is Ms. Stephanie on the call?
You, we have one question in the, in the chat. Can we grab that first? Yeah, I can, I can, I have it right in front of me, so I can take it to get it. So Charlene asks, what's the percentage deviation allowed between councilmatic districts? And by deviation, we're talking about like the gap between like the smallest district and the biggest district. So, you know, this is, this is a, the figures we're looking at in the top left-hand corner there. You know, as, as I've noted, the, the target or the ideal population is 160,000. And we get that by taking the city's total population, 1.6 million people, and dividing it by 10. But there's a, there's this kind of gap that's allowed, this difference that's allowed between the smallest district and the biggest district. And when you do the arithmetic, it basically means that the map that's drawn on the other side of this, the smallest district, the district with the fewest people can have no fewer than about 152,400 people. The, the biggest district, the most populous district can have no more than 168,400 people. So this, and this is actually really, really important, really, really helpful, because if we were to try to draw these, these districts so that they were exactly equal, like to the person, you'd end up sacrificing all sorts of other things. And your short stories, you'd end up, you'd end up splitting neighborhoods and communities left, right, and center to try to meet that population quality. So the fact that we do have this gap here is helpful. One other thing I'll, I'll note just on this, on this slide before we transition is that I think it's, it's really important for all of us to keep in mind that, like, there's no, there's no perfect map out there, right? This, this map, you know, is in far better shape than the one we had before. And, you know, I think our, our understanding and presumption is like, a lot of folks probably, you feel pretty good about these, some of these boundaries where they are. Other, other folks not, you're not, maybe not, maybe, maybe not so excited about the boundaries to close, close to them. But that's why we're here to kind of elevate and talk about these, these perspectives on where the boundaries are. And then, you know, ultimately, you know, it will be city council who's going to have to figure this out and where, where the lines go. And, you know, this, a real challenge with redistricting is that it's impossible to meet kind of everybody's objectives or everybody's, what everybody wants to get done. There'd be, you know, sometimes a tension between what one community wants and one party's saying what another community wants and, and another. So that's like a, a really kind of important dynamic process. So I guess with, with, with that, we transitioning here?
I'm not sure Stephanie is on the call.
Yes, I'm here. Hello, everyone. Abu, you wanted me to talk about something? I mean, as you mentioned, it's a struggle, just. I, hello, everyone. My name is Stephanie Michelle. I'm the Executive Director of the North Fifth Street Revitalization Project. I'm just so used to talking to Abu, I was about to go, right? But the North Fifth Street Revitalization Project, we manage the North Fifth Street Commercial Corridor from Fifth and the Boulevard up to Fifth and Godfrey. So we support the businesses as well as one block east and west on all of the side streets. We've had the pleasure and the honor of working with Councilwoman Parker. She's a great supporter of our office. And as Abu mentioned, it's, it can be a struggle sometimes managing a commercial corridor that is, you know, it's about 13 blocks, a mile and a half long, but it's split amongst two different councilmatic districts. So we have the ninth above the bridge. So from everybody that's in the community, if you know Fifth and Somerville, where Dunkin' Donuts is, from the bridge north is the ninth councilmatic district, and from the bridge south is the eighth councilmatic district. And so a lot of our projects with businesses, our capital improvement projects on the corridor, it can be difficult to get the support that we need when we are trying to go between both districts to do so. And it will be, it would make our work a lot more easier, seamless. We would be able to do larger projects that improve all of North Fifth Street from top to bottom, I believe, if we were able to be within one district.
I appreciate that, Stephanie. And, you know, Stephanie is, you know, Stephanie is literally on, on the, on the ground every single day, like in the mix. And, you know, I think the viewpoint matters. She has the opportunity firsthand on how to deal with and been dealing with two different councilmatic districts and how, you know, her vision, you know, for Fifth Street and the community's vision for Fifth Street, you know, it can happen, but it's also, you know, when you have two different councilmatic districts, like I said, those are two different councilmatic priorities. And when those are two different councilmatic priorities, you know, you find yourself, you know, leaning on one versus the other, and you find yourself, you know, you know, kind of going back and forth, you know, hitting the wall because you wonder why one customer service is, is different than the other. So I appreciate your feedback and hopefully, I'm excited about the next portion, because we're actually going to play around with some maps and figure out if, what the population and how the population would shift. But I want to make clear, when we play around with these maps, it is the community who's going to be telling us what to highlight and what to take away. I just wanted to make that very clear. This is a nonpartisan effort. We want to make this process transparent as possible. If you know anything about the Committee of Seventy, that they're watchdogs. If you know anything about me, I've been in my community all my life, working hard, getting gray hairs. So it's, I'm very excited. So I'm, I'm actually going to pass it to Ms. Linda Bell, who has her hand up. Thank you, Stephanie.
Hi, my name is Linda Bell. I'm with East Mount Aerie Neighbors, RCO, and Citywide RCO Coalition. And my question, is it my understanding that the citizens of the city don't have any say in this final decision? And the other question was to Stephanie, since you said that you have more support from councilperson, councilmember Parker's office, you would say that your area would rather be with District Nine than District Eight? Those are my, those are my two concerns. Did you hear me?
I heard you. I'll go, I don't know about the first question of Abu.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, you said the, I'm sorry, I just, you were breaking up on mine. The first question was what?
The first question is how, really, how can the citizens have more input? Since this is a closed-door decision between the councilmembers, and it really ends up being a political decision, how do we have more influence and input in what that, what that decision could be?
So right now, that's an excellent question, Ms. Bell. Thank you for asking it. Right now, you know, we're starting it. You know, like I stated before, this is, this, number one, we have 12 of these community input sessions that we have to organize around the city and impact communities. And this is the first one we actually launched, and I wanted to launch in Alani because that's where I'm from. And, you know, the goal from these meetings is to collect the data and to, you know, come up in some ideas with maps and to submit that if we can come up collectively with maps or if each organization want to create their own maps, but to take that information and take it to the councilperson and say, here, this is what the community members in your district. And what, and what that means is it can mean multiple things. It can mean testifying and hearings. It can mean pushing some type of engagement. It can mean, you know, it can mean so many different things to make sure that they take what we say into consideration. There is elections happening in 2022 and 2023. And right now, I think this is the, the crucial moment to give them the idea of this is what the community want or think about in this district, and you should really take this into consideration. So with, with, with organizations coming together with the assistance of the Committee of Seventy, community leaders, this won't be a problem. One thing we actually done, and I also believe in political etiquette, is that every councilmatic district we went in, we made sure we let the councilperson know that we were organizing this meeting. So they are aware that we are organizing this meeting, and we have gotten the green light. And even if we didn't get the green light, it doesn't matter. But we have gotten the green light. So everybody's hopefully is going to be looking for some information from all the meetings that we host so that then we, in return, can turn it to the councilperson.
So what I'm hearing you say is this, we are setting a precedent for how we want the, the government to move forward on these issues.
Yes, ma'am.
Move forward. Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions? I'm seeing the chat. Okay, Linda Mill, okay. Are we suggesting to merge eight and nine overlapping? It's not the, so you want to, let's go, let's go to the, can we go to the maps?
Yeah, yeah. Why don't we do that? We'll, we'll take a quick tour so all of us are kind of seeing the same, same thing. It's good timing for that. Yep. Here we go. All right. Do you want to, want to take us on a quick tour here?
Yeah, so this, District Builder. So this is the, a picture of Philadelphia. And those highlighted areas are councilmatic districts. So when you look at right there with Pinpoint, Philadelphia, that's City Hall, right? When you look at the line going across, you know, we all know that's Broad Street. And when we look at, yeah, that's Broad Street. So right now, the reddish area is Councilmatic District Eight. And the discussion right now is, should Councilmatic District Eight? And let me explain, what is Councilmatic District Eight? Councilmatic District Eight comes from Mount Aerie, covers Nicetown, Tioga, covers Germantown, comes all the way down to, covers Huntington Park, and comes all the way down into Nicetown, and to Logan, to this portion of the Logan area. And to kind of go over the Councilmatic District Nine, hopefully I get this right, Kiyashi, don't kill me, is West Oak Lane coming down to the, to the Alani area, which, 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 the Alani area, and then moving over to more of, what is that? The Frankfurt? Is that?
Longcrass, Longdale, Somerdale, Burgho.
That's what I'm talking about. Thank you. That area, okay? So that's Councilmatic, okay, you know your district. That's Councilmatic District Nine. So the goal is, does it make sense for this particular area, which consists of, I believe, the 49th Ward? Is, should, does it make sense for that district to remain in Councilmatic District Eight or Councilmatic District Nine? And the reason why we're having that discussion is because it's important for organizations like North Fifth Street Revitalization Project to do their job effectively, to be able to bring the resources and, and hold, and, and, and hold the accountable their elected officials to deliver. But it's very difficult, as we discussed tonight, that, you know, when we have two different councilmatic districts, those are two different councilmatic priorities. So what I kind of wanted to get a census from this community, and I'm going to say it because I'm from this community, is that do, do, should Councilmatic District Nine cover that small portion of Logan and Alani? And if so, would folks be in support of, of pushing that? And if not, where do, if not, and if you, if it's okay, say, hey, you know, I think this is okay. I don't have a problem with this. Then that's okay, too. We're not trying to support or, or change, you know, anything. We just want to make sure that we're giving a transparent process and that people, you know, voices are, are collected, particularly in this issue.
Yeah. Yeah. And I could, if I could just, I'll put like an emphatic, like question, you know, you know, exclamation point on, on that. They had the, you know, the, the purpose here is definitely not to be kind of pushing one with the other, the cert changes, but kind of getting folks feedback on the boundaries as they are right now, right? And, you know, some of these boundaries make people maybe feel good about other boundaries. You know, folks may have a preference about changing. And I guess we can, we'll just zoom in real quick so everybody sees what this extension is, right? We got, you know, Roosevelt Boulevard is this diagonal, this big diagonal cuts across the city. Pretty firm artificial boundary, because we, of course, how difficult it is to, to cross. This has also been a, a council this around you for, for some time. But, you know, this, this evening, we're, we're primarily, you know, talking about, of course, this, this area right here, you know, parts of Logan and Alani where, when you zoom in on the east side and the, the light, the light pink is the ninth district, the darker red, pink or red is, is the eighth. Starting off Roosevelt Boulevard here, it's Second Street. That's the, that's the kind of the E. Goes north all the way, basically to the, to the railroad tracks between Fisher and Somerville. And that's the boundary right here. So this is actually not along a road, but the, but the railroad tracks there. And as you go to the west, it comes to another kind of dividing line. This is also like not a road. This is, I believe, actually, there, there might be another rail line right here. It comes all the way down to the Bartlett Rec Center. It cuts across the rec center and goes along Duncan Avenue all the way to, what is this? 11th Street, 11th Street there. And then from 11th Street, it ducks down to Ruscombe, and then from Ruscombe goes west all the way, all the way, the rest of the way to Broad Street. So it's, you know, that's why we're, again, we're, we're kind of highlighting this area because, you know, the districts kind of cover two different, two, two different communities, either Logan and Alani communities as, at large. And again, this is, Abu just stressed this, but like, you know, both for the communities that can, it can be split, but also for the council members themselves, it can be more challenging to kind of share responsibility over, over given area. And you can, you can see this, this sort of dynamic can play out in all different kind of parts of the city. So just wanted to kind of highlight, this is the area we're talking about. Linda?
Thanks. Number one, I, I think it's most important in Alani to make sure that you're preserving the communities of interest, not as much having Alani per se in one district and something else in another district. It depends on where your communities of interest lie. Because that's more important about not splitting your community's interests, because if you want to make sure that you have the option to vote for a candidate of your choice, it should be community of interest making that decision, not the party making the decision. So that's my one point. And my second point is, if you're talking about move, and I don't, you know, one way or the other, I'm not giving the opinion either way. I'm just saying that in the eighth councilmatic district, you already said that the population has dropped. And so therefore, you're going to have to look at another councilmatic district to increase those numbers. And do you have any idea of where you would get those numbers from? That's my two points.
Want me to dig a dig of that? I'll tell, tell.
I, I mean, I, I'm just going to say, um, that's why we're having this discussion today, and that's why this map is live. Because this is literally a real map on if we take one part of the district and move this, you know, if we, if, if we move any part of the district, the population number will change, and we can say, okay, that works. Um, you know, me and Pat were playing around, uh, with a few districts, and it's just like, you know, it shifts. So, I mean, I think that the, the goal is to, to, you know, from the folks who will be impacted and even, um, who lives in both districts, even though we're focused on this district, but just like Ms. Linda said, the population is going to shift. So it's very important that it doesn't matter what part of the district you're in, especially if you're on these boundaries or in that perimeter, you're going to be impacted and your voice should be at the table. So, um, as we start to really, you know, figure out and, you know, play around with the maps, then we will see exactly where those populations can actually go. Um, Pat, did you, do you have anything else?
Well, actually, if Linda, if you know, if you could just speak really briefly, and it looks like we have a couple of other folks with their hands up. Uh, what would be the communities of interest that you, that you would, that you would elevate and highlight in this, in this area?
Oh, I know, in the, in the Alny area, you have a community of interest, you have a large Hispanic population there. Um, and there's another couple of other groups that are there, and so those community of interests probably want to be held together. And I believe that when you're doing the mapping, you should take that into consideration. I, I do know that the tenth, uh, oh, not the tenth, the Fifth Councilmatic, I think, has had the largest growth. And that definitely could be an area where the Eighth Councilmatic might be able to draw numbers from. I'm not a map drawer, but I just know according to what the maps are, um, and what the numbers look like, that might be another option. And also, you know, community of interest also not only could be race, but it also could be, like you mentioned earlier, school districts.
I think, um, and I'm just going to go off. Stephanie, are you still on?
Yes.
So that's, for example, if you're, let's just say, you know, you said, you know, you prefer one councilmatic district. And I, and I'm, I'm going to show you what that actually looks like. So if we can say, if, if so, if you, if, if you're, if, if councilmatic District Nine, takes this from Second and Fisher down to like North, uh, Broad and Wyoming, and that comes councilmatic District Nine, let's see what that looks like and what the numbers would be for that, if, if councilmatic District Nine picks that up. So that will put councilmatic District Nine at what?
A, a hundred and seventy-six thousand. This is just a really good example, right? This is all theoretical, like a really good example of like, where there's a lot of folks that live in here and adding them all to the ninth district would, would put actually too many people in the ninth.
Yeah.
Right? So let's now go to the eighth, right? So we took that, so we took, how many, and how many, how many people was that? How many, is that?
Oh, I'm not.
Okay, we can't, if we can't tell, that's cool. If we do that and let's figure out, if, 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 if the ninth covers that, where does the eighth pick up? Where can the eighth pick up from, right? I think that's the question, right? Because the eighth needs, needs additional, additional.
Right.
Yeah, Linda, I guess that, that was the other part of your question, right? And if, if the, if, if this little part of the eighth were, were transferred actually back to the ninth, actually, because in the previous map, I believe it's from Eleven Street and, you know, east, this was all part of the ninth district previously. Yeah, that means the eighth district would have to pick up even more people from another direction. So, I mean, it, it may be outside the scope of our meeting tonight, right? Because, you know, it could affect the folks in Honey Park. It, it could affect the folks in Allegheny West. Um, and we, I don't think we have too many folks from Honey Park or Allegheny West on, on the line tonight.
Right. And the other basis, when you're doing, when you're drawing maps, and that's something why, how maps are challenged. Maps have to be compact. They can't be like, looking like a snake from one end of the city to the other. They're supposed to be compact and, 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 and contiguous. So also that has to be taken into consideration. I mean, it, it sounds great that you want all of Alny, like you said, and to be, I'm, I live in, I live in the Eighth Councilmatic, so, um, that's why I'm, I'm on this call. But to have all of Alny go into the ninth, you got, it's going to have to be some give and take somewhere. That's just my only point on it.
I'm not sure who, I can't see the whole screen. Uh, it missed.
Sorry. Miss, Miss, Miss Deborah, you have a hand up?
I did. Um, I was, my question is, there a, a way? Um, because right now, there's a lot of information being given. Um, and so I'm one of those people who needs to think about the information to present, um, comments at a later date after I've had time to process the information.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll take a stab at that. So that's, that's, that's a great question. That's a great question. So there, there are a couple, a couple of things here. Um, you know, one is that the, there's a survey that's running right now. It's an online survey, available in a whole, whole bunch of different languages. And the survey actually gets very much of the discussion we're having here. So it's available for any, of course, any city resident or, or stakeholder. Uh, if we were to get a submission from California, we'd, we'd kindly put, put that submission off to the side. Um, so that, that survey is, is live. Uh, and then, you know, I think, you know, Abu and I may, you know, keep, keep thinking about what the other opportunities may be, especially for a bigger and more regional discussion perhaps, because like, all the meetings through December are for more specific parts of the city. Um, so there, there may be another kind of phase of this where more people kind of at a, at a higher and broader level can talk about this, uh, together. But yeah, you're, you're absolutely right. There's, there's a lot kind of like, we're digesting here at, at what, at one time. You, one other thing I'll note though is, is, you know, city council will hold, surely they'll hold some number of public hearings about this. They did ten years ago. I actually expect they would at this time. May not be, may not be ten, uh, but it may be, maybe, you know, a few, and that'd be another opportunity to kind of.
Is there a schedule right now that city council is holding hearings? Because I haven't seen anything yet.
No, I think the city council is his, uh, has got a pretty full plate, uh, so they haven't, you know, to my knowledge, initiated any, any sort of kind of formal work around this yet.
Well, it's kind of important.
You know, and they have, they have to early, uh, they have to early next year. That's true.
Um, can I, I wanted to, um, I, I, I know who's on the call, so please don't hide. I wanted to kind of open it up to some of the community members who live in that impacted community, you know, who, who lives near the bridge, across the street, maybe in two different council, uh, medic districts, um, who lives on Lawrence Street, um, around Fifth and Somerville, Fifth and Fisher, uh, Second and Fisher, Eleventh Street, Thirteenth Street, Twelfth Street. Um, we want to hear from you as well, um, because your input in this process matters. And I'mma call him, Ms. Leslie, um, to, uh, to, to, to kick us off, representing the Alany and the Logan, uh, section. Ms. Leslie?
Oh.
Let's be a dear. Okay. Any, anybody else want to give any, um, feedback or remarks?
So this is on Deborah Canty again, and looking at just the numbers and not necessarily the map, it looks like the councilmatic District Nine really is already at just over a hundred and sixty thousand residents. So it's really about, it, it would seem to me, it's about the Eighth Councilmatic District and being able to get it to the targeted or close to the target at one sixty.
Yep. Yeah, no, that's, that's, that's a, that's a really important observation there. And, yeah, the ninth district is kind of technically kind of very, very close to the, to the ideal or target population. But, you know, because we do have this kind of range between, uh, the, the, the most people this are going to have and the fewest people. You know, the ninth district theoretically could take on some number of divisions, uh, as long as it doesn't get to have, you know, too, too many. Uh, again, that the top, the top end of that range is probably around a hundred and sixty-eight thousand or so. So, yeah, that's a really good point where the eighth district has to pick up people. They have to pick up some number of divisions. You know, a district like the ninth actually technically doesn't have to change at all on, on its own.
Pat, since you have that tool, can you humor me and put, um, uh, that area back into council, uh, councilmatic District Nine and then go up to one nine one five oh and put that in councilmatic District Eight and see what numbers we come up with?
You know what? The, there aren't zip codes on here, so that'll be tough. That'll be tough to do. The zip codes don't line up to the.
If you go, if you go all the way up, I can tell you pretty much.
Yeah, yeah, I, I can, uh, add these in real quick, just as we did before. Yeah, purely, purely as a, as a example for discussion.
Yeah. And we go up to the top of, uh, the ninth district. And just zoom in, um, at the top of the ninth. So if we look at taking, is that all the way to the top?
Well, here's, here's the division between the eighth and the ninth. And you can see again, just, just with, just with.
What's this line right here, right below the L, the, uh, the E? What street is that?
Oh.
Walnut Lane.
Are you talking about this, this boundary right here?
No.
Yeah. No, I'm talking about the going towards Cheltenham. The line going towards Cheltenham.
I'm not sure here.
Right here. Uh, not Worcester, not so far down as Worcester. I say Cheltenham Avenue. Take it to Cheltenham Avenue and see what we have.
See. Where are we going? Where are we going? Where are we going? Cheltenham, Cheltenham, Cheltenham. We're going for the, for the north here?
Yeah, go all the way to the top of the ninth district.
Oh, the top of the ninth?
Ninth, top of the ninth.
Oh, this, oh, Cheltenham, Cheltenham, what are you talking about?
Yeah, the top of the ninth. Take the top of the ninth and color in from the top of the ninth down to.
That's the tenth ward. That's one now, one three eight, where your cursor is.
But this is, this is, this is all the ninth, and I mean.
One now, one five oh star set up.
Yeah, this is all the ninth, and Cheltenham Avenue, of course, is also the, the boundary of the city. You know, I'll add that, you know, the, the.
I'm just take, say, take Uppsle, like she said, up to the, to the ninth. And put that in the Eighth Councilmatic District and see what kind of numbers you have.
Starting from like right here?
She said Uppsle.
Or, or, oh, up here? This, this, this top portion you're saying, Linda?
No.
Yeah, the portion of the, um, of the nine.
The top corner?
Yeah, down Uppsle Street. And give that to the eighth district. And what kind of numbers do we have?
Uh, let's see. I mean, the ninth comes down within, within acceptable population range. The, the four, the eighth would still have to pick up more people.
The, they, this eighth would still need more people?
It would, it would. The thing is, I, I, I think I'm going to, let me pull back on this though, because, uh, for, for a couple of reasons. Number one, like the folks who live in this area, like, aren't on the call this evening. Um, and the other reason is, is, and then, again, part of the reason we're focusing on Logan Alny is that Stent Avenue has been a boundary between the eighth and ninth for, for decades, and that's why it's kind of expected to stay pretty firm. Um, you know, actually, and we will make sure, like, right after this call, that everybody gets this mapping software, which you can see is, it's pretty easy to use. Uh, and it's, uh, uh, it's kind of fun to kind of tinker, tinker around with it. So I, I think that would be the best way for people.
Well, the reason why I say that, the reason why I say that is that area already thinks they're in, in Mount Airy. So they already think they're in one nine one one nine, Mount Airy. So.
No, they don't, no, they don't think they're in one one nine. They know they're in five oh, but when they buy their houses, it's called Mount Airy.
Right.
So, it'll say the ninth council. Sherelle not going to give that up that easy, honey.
That's the whole, that's the whole, that's her whole base. I don't doubt that.
Yeah.
That's too funny.
Yeah. Well, again, this is, this is why, you know, we're having a whole bunch of these. And, you know, the, you know, the, the, the focus of the discussion this evening is around, around Logan Alny. Yeah, surely there, there may be folks in Mount Airy or, or West Oak Lane have things about this. Surely, you know, one of the, one of the biggest meetings and probably more complicated ones will, will be between Allegheny West, Nice Town, Tioga, Honey Park. Um, because you, you got several different districts here that either have to gain, gain or lose. So, yeah, this is where, you know, we, we may well have other meetings and, and kind of bigger ones where people can kind of have comment on, on a more, like a regional level as opposed to a kind of a neighborhood, uh, community level.
Can I, can I just ask a question? This is, we need to come into Mr. Ray Mansion. How's everyone? Hey, I just, I, I mean, when you really think about it, a hundred and sixty thousand people, um, for one person representing is really a lot of residents. So based on just what you're doing, moving around, pulling people in, pulling people out, populations go up, down. Um, gentrification, uh, looks like the fifth district has taken on more than, um, their a hundred and sixty thousand with the increase in, um, population. But what, what is the expectation of, like, like, what is the point? Like, if, if the quality of services, um, don't really change with the redistricting, I'm, I'm really kind of, you know, interested in what, what is the point? Um, that people can, would take away from this? Like, what is, what, how does this help us get better services, streets, um, trash collection? Uh, you know, like, that's done and represented by one, one individual who may or may not be, uh, you know, districts may or may not be, uh, with that quality or, or certain quality of service. So I'm just kind of.
Yeah.
Curious with you.
I'm happy to take a dig of that first, and, you know, welcome, welcome your thoughts. You, I, I guess we, we do want to be careful, like overstating the, and the importance of these, of these districts, especially since these, these boundaries are in so much better shape than the ones from ten years ago. Uh, you know, a lot of the city services you just named, of course, are, are provided by the, the administrative branch, right? The executive branch are there under Mayor Jim Kenny and not necessarily the council members. Um, but, and this, this differs a little bit, community to community. Um, for a part of the city that is split between two or three or, or, you know, four, four council districts, uh, it just can be more challenging, more complicated, maybe at a bare minimum, less, less efficient to have to work with multiple district offices as opposed to just one or, one or two. Um, so, right, and, and, and it actually, it goes two ways. It goes both from the communities and then also like from the council members' point of view and their staff, like, it, it makes, it can be more challenging on, on their end of things as well. So, you know, this is where, you know, Logan, Logan only split, right? Maybe, maybe there's some issues there. I've heard from folks up here along Castro Avenue, which is like a, a major business corridor, a very diverse part of the city. You know, it's challenging for those folks. They got one, two, three, four, include the, the tenth district, Brian O'Neill, uh, three or four council members to, to work with, uh, when it comes to issues around the Castro Avenue corridor. Um, you know, another example is, is Kensington, right? I, I don't think this was done for a nefarious reason, but Kensington is split between a couple of different council districts. Um, that means, that means two different members have to kind of work together, uh, around all the issues that Kensington, Kensington is dealing with. And then the folks that, uh, you know, the folks in Honey Park here, right? They're the very, very northern piece of the council president's district. Um, and, you know, it'd be, they're, they may get a little bit less attention from the council member than they would, uh, in, in another part of the city. Um, and again, it kind of goes both, both ways. It's a challenge both to the communities if they're split, and then also for the council members themselves. If they, because these districts are so big, that's a really good point. These are huge districts. A hundred and sixty thousand people is a lot of people. Um, it's a challenge to kind of cover all that territory, uh, and make sure you're hearing for, hearing from everybody and addressing everybody's issues. So, um, yeah, it, it's, the boundary shifting, it, it won't change things kind of night, you know, kind of night and day. Uh, but it can make a difference in certain communities where they're split right now.
But you made, you made a statement, so I want to, because I think, um, a lot of what I'm, I'm experiencing just in, in the city generally, um, not being clear about who governs what. So your response was more about taking responsibility off of the council members and saying, well, we have the executive branch of government, which is the mayor. So how, how would we, how, how is that a takeaway for those of us that'll be sharing this kind of, um, you, you know, this map, this interactive map with our neighborhoods? Like, like, because we may have, there's a lot of misinformation around who governs what, from ward leaders to committee people to, uh, your legislative and executive branch as the government. So to get a better and more clear understanding of what the expectation would be from this information, sh- should we be educating our communities more around whose, whose responsibility it is for what people believe may be a council member, where in fact it may not? Yes.
Yeah, again, Abu, you want to take a crack at it? You want me? Good question.
Kensington is coming. So if I don't answer your question, let me know. But what I think I hear you saying is, and I, and I think, you know, what we, what we want people to kind of get out of this is the fact that councilmatic priorities are real. You know, and when we talk about councilmatic priorities, you know, I'm not saying that because your trash doesn't get picked up at the same time as other neighborhoods, that that's a council problem. But when we talk about councilmatic priorities, it's important that we have someone, number one, who represents us, who shares those values. And when we're split versus having one voice, it helps out. Um, and I'm just going to take one simple thing, for example, right? When we look. When we look at the bridge on Fifth Street, when we look at getting resources to clean it, when we look at what, what kind of things that we can do, we have to get two council people to agree to do something. Because those are two separate councilmatic districts, yes, it's a quality of life issue, you know, but it also goes into who represents us. Because one council person may say, I support this project, which is a priority of mine, and then the other council person may say, well, this is not a priority. Um, and kind of what, you know, what we've been, you know, seeing on the ground, um, is that, you know, when you look at business corridors in both of these councilmatic districts, um, that's important. Who do you want to represent? Because that means corridors are important, it's a quality of life issue for communities. It's a, it's certain council people's priorities to make sure, I got, I, we got to make sure we have a good corridor in a community with good stores, bookstores, coffee shops, to, to lift up the community, that's a councilmatic priority, and how can they do that? Bring in businesses, fighting for grants, making sure that the wrong businesses don't get on our, on our, on our corridors or in our communities, because it goes down to councilmatic priorities. So, yes, this impacts it, because, you know, with Allney and especially with this area, this area changes every ten years. So that means that everybody in this community has been impacted every ten years, and they never had to say. They never had to state, say, should they be a part of this district, should they not, they literally just got changed.
Absolutely. Abu, how, can you hear me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Clear, I just wanted to, I just wanted to understand how you all were viewing what we're witnessing here and, and what takeaway we, you know, we would have, um, to, you know, further discussing this, you know, in our neighborhoods with our neighbors, so thank you.
Oh, that was Ms. Leslie or Ms. Cummings, I'm sorry.
Ms. Cummings.
Okay, got you.
Hi Abu, this is Leslie, hi. Hi, everyone, um, I'm sorry, I couldn't find my, turn off my mute, so that's what delayed me on my, uh, asking any questions. So, um, as you pointed out to me honestly the other day, to be quite honest, I, I had, you know, I'm, I live in an area right there at the border where the bridge is, where, um, coun- councilwoman Shirley Parker is our councilwoman, but yet, Cindy Bass, if I go to, you know, not even the whole street, under that bridge, I'm in a different, you know, council person's area, and my concern is, as a resident of this neighborhood, the impact of allowing so many of these stores that have this frontage as if there's some sort of candy store, but yet they're selling all this, you know, uh, all these things, you know, people can use to, just pounding, they'll use their, uh, you know, to, um, I'm sorry, I'm trying to think of the word of what they are, um, you know, these smoke. Like, I, no, I, the other day, just walked up to right between Fifth and Chu.
Can everybody put their phone on mute, please?
I think my phone.
Thank you. Okay. Hi, yes, uh, you know, just walking in my immediate area and noticing between, on Fifth Street, but between Chu and right under the bridge where Cindy, uh, Cindy Bass, um, area is, right there at, uh, Fifth and Fisher, there were like four smoke shops. You know, one soon to be open, and I'm just wondering, you know, how, where's the information put up for the residents in the area to be even told that these places are coming? And, you know, th- there was no sort of, no notification explaining anything to us, so, you know, it makes me wonder as a resident in this area, like, who do I talk to about this? This doesn't, who, who's approving these services to be in our neighborhood? The folks that look like they run, they run these stores, don't even live more than likely in the neighborhood. So why do they get to come to our neighborhoods? And, and bring, you know, all this unnecessary things that we have, I mean, it's bad enough. Soon as you go to Fifth and Table Row, there's a, you know, there's a beer store on one corner, there's another one on the other corner, there's a bar, and now we're putting all these smoke shops up here? Like, you know, this is all these kids are saying, it doesn't make sense, so we, you know, who's approving these services, and how are they, these people getting away with it? You know?
Um, I want to, actually, I want to open it up to, um, I want to open up, because I know that we have two, uh, we have both our councilmatic, uh, district, um, offices represented. So I kind of wanted to open it up to, uh, Ms. Kiyasha, who represents Council District Nine, and then we'll turn it over to the member who represents Council District.
Um, so, uh, sorry, I'm gonna try to speak up, but there's two minutes going on here, and I'm getting hoarse, so can you hear me?
Everybody put their phone on mute, please.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Kiyasha.
Okay, so, uh, regarding the smoke shops, they're, uh, it is, they're right now by right uses, uh, for North Fifth Street, which means that those types of businesses do not have to go through the zoning process, they do not require an RCO meeting in order to open on Fifth Street, because they are permitted use based on the zoning code, as that stripped is own commercial, uh, C, uh, CMX two, uh, so it's commercial mixed use. So that is why there are no notices going up. However, it is important that our corridors have organizations like Stephanie's, um, who represents North Fifth Street, because she's staying abreast of those types of businesses that are opening up. And she's working with our office, as well as Councilwoman Bass's office, and Councilwoman McGill-Moore-Bridge's office to schedule the tours that, um, are taking place on commercial corridors where influx of these smoke shops are opening. So, Ms. Leslie, I want you to know that this is on our radar, um, on our radar, because we all, uh, we are all in the community, but also because we have an organization like North Fifth Street there, um, whose purpose is to stay connected to the business owners and the residents. What we all, why it is important for you all to be a part of this conversation, though, is because we don't have a lot of residents in Allney who show up to these RCO meetings that we have, and who show up for organizations like Stephanie, who is maxed to capacity with the staff, are very little, but they're doing the very best they can to serve businesses and to work with all of the elected officials that represent the area, because there are five or six, and you include all of your state electives. Um, what we, what we need in this community is more support for North Fifth Street, um, as an organization, and we need more people in that area to be involved with Stephanie's organization to support them, and the organizing that they're trying to do, um, on the ground with regard to getting these smoke shops out of their community. What is also going to take up for these shops is for people to stop buying from these shops. Um, there's going to have to be a concerted effort on the ground to protest against the shops, that they stop coming to the community, and that can be organized through Stephanie's, North Fifth Street, and with the support of the council member offices. So we've used North Fifth Street as an example a lot, uh, but our office works with Councilwoman Bass's office when there are issues related to where we overlap in the district, so we also overlap on Broad Street, and we overlap on Stent and Avenue. So, in areas where there are multiple council people, it is important for the council members and the council member staff to have a working relationship. Um, and the community also is very clear about holding us accountable to that. And that is what you all can do as residents, if you have areas where there's overlap with your council member, in your council districts. But, um, East, uh, East Mount Airy has East Mount Airy neighbors, and they've been an active organization for ye- for decades. And what, again, Logan has Logan Civic Association, but Ms. Charlene also needs more members to join Logan Civic Association, and to be a bit louder about the challenges that residents are facing in Logan, and the same thing in Allney. So it is important for you all to be here, because it's going to take a real concerted effort to change some of the social issues that we're having in our neighborhoods, but this is where the conversation starts, as next year is going to be about redistricting on multiple levels, not just the sixth.
I'm sorry, what's your name again? I can't hear you. I can't hear you.
Sorry, I muted. My name is Kiyasha Tyson, I manage special projects for Councilwoman Parker.
So, Ms. Kiyasha, yeah, I, I didn't catch your last name, I'm sorry.
Tyson.
Tyson, okay. Now, you're saying that, that, that the area over here where I'm talking about is a mixed zone area, is that a mixed code or mixed zone area? That they entitled to mixed usage?
Yes, Ms. Leslie, I'll put my number in the chat, you can, uh, I'll direct message you. Or you, I just don't, like, we could go on a tangent about these, so I don't want to lose the focus, so I'll put my email address in the chat, shoot me your telephone number, and I'll give you a call tonight or tomorrow, okay? I just don't want to take away from the purpose of today.
No, no, absolutely, okay, all right, thank you so much.
Uh, Mr. Jamison from, um, Councilmatic District Eight.
Miss, that's a woman, Abu.
I'm a miss, I'm sorry.
Yes, um, unusual name, I get that a lot, so no worries. Um, but it is Ms. Rodney Jameson, and I am with, um, Councilwoman Cindy Bass's office, and I do work with Councilwoman Parker's office as well. So we, um, understand the issues that you're facing, but I just want to really applaud this effort tonight. I really do believe that community involvement is the key to success, no matter who's elected. Um, and we do have two strong council people elected in a district that are working diligently to deal with some of the inherited zoning issues, um, kind of reconfiguring through legislation and through action as to how now we get, you know, years prior to our council person's being elected, these old laws on the books that say, you know, you can buy, um, a stop and go just by, you know, owning a, a license, or someone can lease a license to you. So recently, we've been on tours throughout the district, looking at the stop and goes and smoke shops. We invited LNI, we invited the Department of Health, we invited the Liquor Control Board, we have contacted, uh, the Tobacco A- Agency. We strategically are figuring out how to get rid of these stop and goes, and I tell you a few of the stumbling blocks, um, to that end. Number one, a liquor control board only meets every two years, so there's a meeting coming up in October of twenty twenty-two. Before twenty twenty-two, when they re, re, look at these licenses for renewal, they will not revoke licenses in Philadelphia until they come up for renewal. In preparation for this process, we are calling LNI, Department of Health, going out there with them, having these establishments cited. The, uh, some of our, um, elected officials have, uh, doubled up on a legislation saying there's no tobacco zones, for example, around school areas, et cetera. We are doing, we are annoyed by the problem as well. And unfortunately, a lot of these problems fall back on the state. So the city has to work within a purview of the state, which supersedes us on liquor licensing. So that means all hands on deck, if you see something, please report it. We are developing a case against these establishments, so that when they come up for their licensing, in October twenty-two, we have to follow the state process, those licenses will be revoked. And I invite anyone as well, if you would like more information, or particular examples of stores where we have the Department of Health now increasing the inspections in the community, because so many people have complained, these are the steps we have to take in order to rid ourselves of this problem permanently. So it is very important that we stay in touch, that we report problems to LNI, to the Department of Health, to three one one, to Councilwoman Cindy Bass's office. The more we know, we can build a case to end this, because we don't want to come back two years from now, having this same discussion. But based on the laws, we have to follow suit and do everything strategically that's available to us, and your help will greatly be appreciated, but please know, uh, we are an open office, feel free to call, uh, and again, I'm Rodney Jamison. You can call the office number and ask for me, and I'm happy to provide you with all the steps we're taking with the community to hopefully resolve these types of issues over the long run. And as far as the commercial, um, quarter is concerned, I, I do believe the advocacy, um, is, is, is helping, and we're aware. We would also like to meet more often to discuss, um, you know, what further steps you would like our office to take. And again, I commend the effort tonight, because I really believe the more people understand government, the more we will get done as a community, so the, 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 being involved in the redistricting is important. And I am not going to say what's right or wrong to the people that live in the community, but please, if you have issues, we are here to assist in every way we can. And it, and please keep in mind, there is a process, um, for some of these issues that have lingered for over thirty years. I, I was advocating against the stop and goes over thirty years ago at Harrisburg, so it, it's been an ongoing problem in many, many parts of the city. But this is phenomenal, the work that you've done here at the ninth, the mapping, making people understand how important this is, and whatever you need, um, I'm here to support that. So thank you.
Well, thank you so much, I appreciate that. And just kind of, just to piggyback for a few seconds, I just have to give a shout out to, uh, my ward leader Sharon Vaughn. I know that, you know, she's been doing a lot of work in the beginning, and, you know, there's times where we, she got in two of those shops to, to shut down, working with Council Park, Councilwoman Parker and Councilwoman Bass to shut down. Um, but yet, you know, a week later, they open back up, and, you know, to be honest, if we're going to change that, we didn't, we need to revise our zoning code. Uh, that's the only way that we're going to put stipulations on these businesses coming into our community, and that needs to be a councilmatic priority. Uh, so if you're stopping, if you're tired of those stop and goes, speak to your council person and let them know that this should be a councilmatic priority to revise the zoning code, so that these, these businesses won't keep popping up under grocery stores. Um, but to, um, so thank you so much, uh, Kiyasha, uh, and Ms. uh, Jamison for, uh, representing, uh, the council, uh, people's office. Um, do anyone have any questions? I see that we have, um, who do we have? How do you pronounce your name? Uh, Hock? Haki?
Abdul Hock.
Abdul Hock, okay.
Yeah, yeah, Tali Abdul Hock.
Oh, Mr. Lee, I'm sorry, Mr. Lee, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Lee.
That's okay, yeah, the cat lady.
Okay, um, I have a couple of questions, uh, a little while ago, um, one of the ladies spoke about the, I believe, RCO meetings and about, uh, it's not coming out from Allney. Well, we're not aware of when or where these meetings are, you know, we would come out, but we don't have any information. So how would, how would we find out, you know, when these meetings are?
Sure, so they, um, it was me, based on the, uh, zoning code, applicants have to let residents within two hundred and fifty feet, um, know about the, about any, um, RCO cases. However, Abu mentioned Sharon Vaughn, who's a ward leader in the twenty-second ward, um, and there's Pete Lyte, who's the ward leader for the sixty-first ward. If you're on that side of Allney, they both are very active ward leaders, and they both have a zoning committee. Uh, Shontay Lindsay runs the forty-second ward zoning committee, she works very hard to keep residents abreast of the RCO issues and within that, uh, within the forty-second ward where Allney, where Allney and Feltonville, uh, is. So I can, if you put your information in chat or give it to Abu, he can put you in touch with Shontay Lindsay, um, who runs the forty-second ward RCO, and if that's not the right one, if, if you're not on that side of Allney, because the wards are also, wards also have boundaries, as you know, that you could call our office and we can let you know who's your nearest RCO. Now, but we do not have, um, a RCO in some parts of the forty-second and sixty-first ward, because the RCO there, we had to, uh, we did not support their application, because they were not doing a good job. However, Hillary Emerson in our office is now taking on the RCO responsibilities, which is a heavy lift. Um, so we can let you know that once we have your address and, and we understand what part of Allney you live in.
Okay, I'll follow up with Abu with that, now my other question. My other question is, um, we, you know, like, how, like, what is, what procedure should we follow to complain about, like, these stop and goes, because I understand, okay, they have the zoning, but they're not zoned to have. about, like, these stop and goes? Because I understand, okay, they have the zoning, but they're not zoned to have drunk people outside being a nuisance while children are traveling home from school. So should we dial nine-one-one, three-one-one, or is there another procedure we should follow?
Ma'am, I, that's a great question. And again, with the law, it becomes convoluted. With something that looks like a crime, call nine-one-one. If they are selling underage, uh, liquor, you know, liquor to someone underage, that's a liquor control problem. You can call, um, the Liquor Control Board. But to be sure, just call Councilwoman Cindy Bass's office, and we will report the incident to the proper, um, uh, department for you. Um, but always call nine-one-one, because those records are something that the Liquor Control Board looks at when the licensing comes up for renewal. Now, there have been cases we found recently where the Liquor Control Board asked the police departments for this information, and the police departments had very little as far as complaints are concerned. Now, I don't believe that, but I'm not making any accusations. I'm just saying, make sure you call our office, please. And also call nine-one-one. The more we do it, the more we have to find the records so that we can permanently shut these places down.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do anybody have any ques- last minute questions before we wrap it up and kind of go to next steps? Because I know that I want to give folks their time back.
Good evening. This is Archbishop. I did put in the chat whether or not we would be able to get a copy of this recording, so I can share it with those, not only my constituents, um, other clergy and urge clergy and other persons that live in that. I live in the eighth, but I have a a group of folks who weren't able to be on this tonight. Will we be able to get a copy of this by email if we registered, or how will we obtain one?
Yes, um, because, I mean, this, we were trying to make this process most transparent as possible, so yes, um. If we have your information, if you signed up, and please, if you want to request a copy of it, um, I'll put my email in the chat, and then we'll just, you know, make sure you get a copy of this video. But just know that also, make sure that, uh, if you guys haven't checked it out, uh, if you go on a website where you register at first, we have a list of meetings. So some of these councilmatic districts are going to be, uh, in a meeting with different neighborhoods. So we're going to be, you know, we're, I, I know that we're going to revisit Councilmatic District Eight, because we're bringing in, you know, the nice town, Tioga, Huntington Park, um, area, you know, to discuss where does that shift? Should I stay in the eighth? Should I move to the fifth? So every, you know, every meeting is going to be different based on the council district, but every meeting, uh, if folks want a copy of it, the answer, the short answer is yes.
Abu, I have another comment. Hi, this is Leslie again.
Hey. Yes, ma'am.
You know, while we're on the call, and I'm sorry, um, this might be shifting gears a little bit, but, um, you know, living in the, the resident we lived in, we petitioned to get a permit parking on our street. And we've had it for the last two years, but to be honest, those signs are up as a joke, because people that don't even live on our street know they can park on this block beyond the hour that the signs indicate. The signs are up indicating eight AM to twelve PM, midnight, one hour parking, but, you know, their car is constantly around here. That one, um, they park all night and all day, and they don't move their car because they know Parking Authority isn't coming around. Um, we also have, unfortunately, residents who don't have, who don't even have a license plate on their car, and they managed to never get a ticket or anything. And um, I think I've called the councilwoman's office on this once, um, to see what is the issue with Parking Authority? Because they come around here, I mean, I don't know if they report that they come on this street, but they don't come around here. Believe me, I, I know I'm home all day, so they don't come on our street. Very rare at all. And it, and you know, right now I have the permit that I have to repay for, you know, on a yearly basis. And to me, as a resident, it doesn't make sense that, we all know if you drive a car in Pennsylvania, you have to pay for your registration, you have to pay for your inspection. You know, you have to pay for all these things to keep your, your insurance, all these things running. And now we incorporated permit parking, because we're around the str- around the corner from all the commercial places. And, you know, between that, um, that bar on the corner and between just, uh, you know, people, again, people don't even live on this street. No, they can park their car on this block and leave it here for days, and Parking Authority do not come around here and give them a ticket.
Ms. Leslie, you, you are Lawrence. Okay, just, I put my email in your chat, you shoot me your information, okay? I'll give you a call. I don't want to take a while. I'll give you a call.
No problem. Yes, thank you.
Ms. Leslie, I know, listen, I, I know we talked about it, um, and, you know, please reach out to Kiyasha, uh, because, you know, that's our council person, and Kiyasha will definitely follow up. I think, um, you know, and I told you too, like, you know, this is for community input sessions, and like I said, you, we need to have a separate, you know, meeting with you know, I mean, our council person for that particular issue. So like, that's something totally different, but.
Yes, I'm, yes, I'm sorry. I know.
No worries. Any, do you might have any other questions, comments, or concerns? Um, but what we're going to do, I guess, following next steps, uh, since we kind of didn't get a collective, uh, voice around our mess, which is okay, um, we are going to send you guys this database, um, so that you can actually, uh, use it uh, and play around with it. And actually, you can submit these maps, um, you know, to your council person, um, to give them ideas on what you're thinking as a voter, uh, as a taxpaying citizen in that councilmatic district. So, um, we'll follow up, and if we have to follow up with another meeting, um, we will. Uh, just know that we're very, we're on a time, a time on frame. Council has to release, uh, new maps by February twelfth, or they don't get paid. Um, and, you know, nobody does not want to get paid. Um, so I know that they're going to be kind of speeding up this process, so we have literally like twelve to fifteen meetings around the city between now and December. On the weekends, during the week, we're going to be running and bringing organizations, you know, and community leaders and ward leaders and committee people, um, you know, to, uh, to talk about this. Also too, um, just to wrap up, where, there's some things that we've looking at. Like I said, putting together, uh, to, to, to push a bipartisanship, um, you know, coalition for the next ten years, we councilmatic redistricting, whereas like, it should be made up of community members, um, you know, to, to, to offload the process, um, which will be important. Um, so, um, please let me know if you have any additional questions after we send you a, um, an email with any additional information. If you need more training on the map, uh, I can probably, uh, schedule some time with you, um, to kind of go over some of the logistics on the map, and then.
Can I make one suggestion?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, um, can, and I missed the opening because I was late. I was with the constituents, so, sorry. Can you all talk about the importance to of the state redistricting? Because that's where, um, that's where Philadelphia is heavily impacted when we're working to advance legislation that impacts Philadelphia as a first class. A lot of the times, it's halted in the state because we can't get Republicans or Democrats from other parts of the state to support the legislation, um, because of the way they view the city. So if you all could add just like a component to your presentation that talks about the state redistricting efforts as well, because I don't, too many of our residents don't understand the correlation between the state redistricting and what happens at the state, and how that impacts us as a city, and us being able to stop stop and goes and stop these smoke shops from opening and address some of the other, uh, gun safety measures that the state representatives have been trying to advance from Philadelphia. So could you all add that as a component, like you have people who are talking about?
I know Pat has been leading, so I've been focusing more on councilmatic redistricting, so we have three redistrictings happening. I know that Pat's been on the forefront on congressional and state redistricting. Pat, do you kind of want to give like a quick summary on like what's happening and how we're going to see some major shifts?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And, and we can, we can absolutely make sure that, that everybody we're reaching out to around council redistricting. We also fly what's happening at the, at the state level. Yeah, because it, as you know, the, the State House and Senate maps just within the city are a mess. Uh, and then, and then you have the partionship, right? I mean, the partionship really doesn't matter all that much in the city of Philadelphia, but it matters a great deal at the, at the state level. Um, the, the good news is that, uh, whereas the Republican Party kind of ran the table, they, they complete power and control, uh, ten years ago. That's not the case this time around. Um, and actually, our own Representative Joanna McClinton is on this very powerful five-member body that draws the State House and States in the Maps. So that, that's, it's a huge deal. Um, it kind of, it, it, I think to some extent, it guarantees that the maps will be better than they were before, and in Philadelphia will not be disadvantaged the way it was before. Um, and Rep- Representative McClinton has already taken a huge step forward as far as an equitable set of maps, a racially equitable set of maps, and that she championed a proposal to count, uh, on paper, uh, but this is, this, this has a real consequence, to count back home, uh, at almost thirty thousand Pennsylvanians, uh, for the purpose of State House, the State, uh, State, State, State House and States in the District. So that, that means basically, there are thousands of Philadelphians, right, who are behind bars elsewhere, elsewhere in the Commonwealth. Uh, and that kind of robs the city of Philadelphia of political representation and political power. So those folks are counted back home this time around for the purpose of drawing State House and Senate map. So, um, this, this, this body is going to put out there a preliminary map sometime very soon, and we can absolutely make sure that everybody knows, uh, is immediately, uh, when that map is out there. And then if, if they're big issues and you're part of the city, um, that you can flag those. And again, we, you know, we have one of our own representatives on this body, who would probably be the best conduit for the, for the feedback. But yeah, and we can, so we can certainly flag this in our, in our, uh, our scope of, of discussion going forward.
And could you, could you talk a little bit more about the, uh, um, the folks who are behind bars on State Road, which is more of like, you know, the city and how that's going to, you know, impact?
Yeah, yeah, just, just briefly. So the, the, the state level, uh, decision only affected people held in state-run correctional facilities, right, right, run by state government. You know, almost thirty thousand Pennsylvanians, uh, shifted back, um, in that, in that reallocation. Uh, so the city of Philadelphia, of course, also has city-run, uh, correctional or detention facilities, and they're all uh, on State Road in, in the, in the northeast, which is in the sixth district. So when the census was administered last year, um, in April, uh, the way the census does, does things is if you're in a group quarter, uh, which includes people who are behind bars, you get counted where you're being held. Um, and so we have uh, at least four thousand Philadelphians who are counted in the sixth district, uh, last year, who we would like to, for the purposes of council redistricting, uh, count back in their home area. So it's kind of the same dynamic as the state level, right? You got a, a bunch of, of Philadelphians or other folks counted elsewhere in Pennsylvania, and we want to count them back home to get our political power back. It's a similar thing at, at, at the city level here, where you have a bunch of Philadelphians, not, they're not all Philadelphians, but a bunch of them are. They're getting counted in the sixth district instead of back in their home community and their, their home district, which again, it basically transfers a little bit of political power to the sixth district that shouldn't be going that way. So I don't think the city has ever done this before, but, um, this is something we're, we're calling on, on, uh, it's actually not just council, but the, the Kenny administration would actually have to do the work here to do this, to do this reallocation. So that's, it's, it's a big piece of the, of the advocacy and something we're working, working hard on.
Thank you, Pat. Appreciate you, uh, so much.
Sorry, can I ask a more question? So if the Kenny administration agrees to do that, how does that, will we have to also shift the sixth district?
Well, it, it would be true that the sixth district, I mean, we had the population figures up a second ago. All of a sudden, if the Kenny administration were to, were to reallocate those folks, I can't remember what the sixth district it has, but it would lose three or four thousand people, um, the sixth district. So they would have to, they would have to pick up, uh, those folks from, uh, again, from a neighboring district, but the, the overall, you know, importance of it, of course, is that, you know, these, these folks don't live in the sixth district. They live elsewhere in the city of Philadelphia. Um, but yeah, and, and it is the Kenny administration who would have to make that call and do that work, and we're, we're lobbying them to do that.
And, you know, I was told by, uh, State Senator, um, Senator Sheree Street, uh, who represents our district, is that the, the thirty thousand people who are returning home from those state prisons, at least about eighty percent are coming back into his district. That's our communities. So he's literally, you know, those numbers are coming back, the majority of those numbers are coming back, uh, to, you know, what is that, Senatorial Three? Um, district which encompass, you know, parts of Councilmatic District Eight and Councilmatic District Nine. So that's going to be an important shift in numbers, uh, heading our way as well. So if there's no questions, comments, or concerns, what we'll do is that everyone who registered today will just follow up with an email and send you a copy of this recording. Um, both of your, uh, council, um, council members' information is in the chat. So if you need anything, uh, related to city council issues, uh, please contact them. I know that some of the issues are not city council-related, and they'll be more than welcome to, uh, directly to your state representative. Um, so, um, if we have no questions, I'm actually going to adjourn, uh, adjourn this meeting.
Sounds good. Thanks to everybody. Great discussion.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, and thank you.